All right. I am. All right. Welcome to the Monday, January 22nd, 2024 Select Board Meeting. We're gonna start tonight with a couple of announcements and about Niagara Hall. First, there's comedy night, which is, is that this Saturday? This Saturday at 7:30, there is the Northeast Best Stand-Up Comedy is Back. Niagara Coffee House, again, 7:30, Saturday, January 27. Also at Niagara Hall, we have the Saturday, February 17th, at 2:30, there is a book launch for Paul Rooney, Widow's Cove, a Rob Ragusa thriller. Go with that. All right. So if anybody's interested, you can attend both of those. Is that it for announcements? Anybody else have an announcement?
Nope.
All right. All right. The ConCam Disclosure Letter.
Um, ConCom.
Tom, I'm sorry. Sorry.
It's ConCom.
Conservation Commission, but okay.
What do you have to disclose? ConCom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you have a letter of recommendation from the Chair of the Conservation Commission relating to two letters of disclosure regarding issues before the Commission. The Conservation Commission is seeking your approval under MGL Chapter 268A, Section 19B, to seek a determination that the financial interests held by two members of the Conservation Commission, namely John Stedman and David Larson, are not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect. And in the packet, I did put a copy of that section of state law. The Board, as the appointing authority of the Conservation Commission, is the body that needs to make the determination. And again, you have a letter from James Lederer, the Chair of the ConCom, recommending approval of those disclosure letters that would let them continue to act in their capacity as Conservation Commission members for all the various issues to come before them. So in reviewing it, it certainly seems reasonable, and I would recommend the Board consider approval of that.
Yeah, basically, they both live at Glen Ellyn, the Glen, and they have a one, 324th share of the interest in the trust. So I personally have no issue with this. The rest of the Board, anybody?
No.
Okay. And they're both do good quality work for the Commission. So I'd hate to have something get in the way of that.
Yes. So you ready?
I am.
I move that the Board, acting as appointing authority for the Conservation Commission, have determined that the financial interest of members David Larson and John Stedman, both residents of Regency at Glen Ellyn, is not substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect in matters that come before the Commission regarding the Regency at Glen Ellyn, and authorize the Chair to sign the disclosure forms as required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 19.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to do this. And I'll sign the letter if we have the letter.
I have it in the other room, so I will sign it.
Okay, I'll sign it tonight if you have it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, perfect.
Great, thank you.
Do you have this tonight? Because I may or may not be around tomorrow.
Yes, no, I haven't, so forgive me.
All right. All right. We have a hearing coming up for a special permit. You're gonna have to make a motion on that.
I am.
Yes, you are.
I move the special permit hearing for 1480-1486 Main Street to continue to February 12th, 2024, at 7:30.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of continuing the hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's done. All right. See how quick we were to get you on? Okay.
Can we start early, or?
Yeah, this isn't an official hearing.
This is not a legal hearing. It's basically to make sure the public can view the process at the point we're in as far as the new plan.
All set?
Please.
Okay. Good evening. Chief Barrett, I'm here tonight as Chair of the Local Emergency Planning Committee. I'm gonna introduce Martin Pillsbury from the MAPC, who is going to explain the town's hazard mitigation plan. Funding to do this plan was obtained through a grant by Bob Weiss, who did a great job. And over several meetings with our LEPC, we came up with this plan, and Martin has put together a great presentation for you guys. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Martin to give you the presentation.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Board, for having me tonight. So I will put this up, share this PowerPoint, make sure this works the way we're hoping it's going to work, right? Where do I get the? Is that the? Trying to get the presentation mode here. There it is.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yes, thank you for having me here tonight. So the town is in the middle of this process of putting together a hazard mitigation plan, and this presentation will give you a sense of what we've done so far and what the next steps will be over the next few months as we head towards completing the project. But let's back up a minute because hazard mitigation plans are not necessarily... Can I make this go away? Just one.
In the right, in the right corner.
Yeah.
I'm not sure you can, but.
I don't think you can.
Okay.
But you want to be able to minimize it that way in the left-hand upper corner.
I'm trying to get my... Huh. Move it. I don't know. I'm not gonna worry about too much.
Yeah.
Fine by me.
And I jumped ahead a slide. I didn't want to do that. How do I get that back?
Maybe back out.
Back, back. Okay, well, that was just a cover slide anyway. And so we can move right on to the next slide. So, yeah, hazard mitigation plan that the town is working on is under a FEMA program, a nationwide program. So you and theoretically, every other city and town in the whole country does these kind of plans. I won't say that FEMA has 100% compliance with this, but very large number of communities across the country, across this Commonwealth, do these plans. And it's under the auspices of the Disaster Mitigation Act, a federal law from the year 2000 that you see here, which directed FEMA to set up a program to help communities and states develop approaches to reducing their vulnerability to natural hazards. Before this law, FEMA's whole mission had been come in after the disaster happened, do the emergency response, the longer-term emergency recovery, which they still do all of that, and all of that is still needed. This was an additional task that says, let's not only think about what happens after the disaster, during and after the disaster, but let's think, can communities, can states, and even private individuals do more before disaster happens to make themselves less vulnerable to the eventual, natural events that occur? And so that's the philosophy and the reason for this act. And then FEMA has put this together as implementing it through doing a series of plans at the state and local level. So the state actually has, and all the states have, state-level hazard mitigation plans. In fact, Massachusetts has just adopted its newest plan just about three months ago. And their five-year plans, just like your community's plan, is a five-year plan. So we're doing an update now, and the state just did their update. The program is often referred to as pre-disaster mitigation. So what do you do before, as opposed to post-disaster recovery? And they've always had those measures, like I say. And on a five-year planning cycle, the idea is that enough changes every five years or so in this field, in terms of what the hazards are, in terms of the measures the towns have available to really... That, you know, these plans need to be refreshed. So we're in the process of refreshing a plan that you actually did about five years ago for the last time, and there was one before that. I think this is your third plan in the cycle of FEMA plan renewals. It's not a requirement to do this plan. There's no, like, fines if you don't do it. It's not an unfunded mandate. However, there's a big carrot. There's a big sort of incentive, and that is FEMA has very large grant programs to actually fund projects on the ground, drainage improvements and all kinds of things. They will want you to have a plan in place and approved by FEMA in order to actually be eligible for those grants for the project. So that's the, you know, and it really kind of really makes sense. If you're going to invest in infrastructure and projects, you want to see that the ideas for those have been vetted through a process within the community. You can compare it to other alternatives, come out with the best ideas that you might bring forward for funding, show that different community members in the community, you know, understand what the town is doing about this. So give it some transparency. That's kind of the whole framework of doing these plans. So on the right side, that's just a graphic of your previous plan from 2018. And my problem I'm having here is that I'm not getting my advance there. Okay. So this is a plan for natural hazards. FEMA has a lot of programs for different kinds of hazards. Obviously, we thought a lot in the last 20 years about homeland security, terrorist threats. FEMA is very involved with that. They are also involved with things like nuclear and chemical accidents and all that. This is not, those are other programs. Sometimes they might interface with them, but this is all about natural hazards, but every kind of natural hazard you can imagine. So rainstorms and floods and snowstorms and earthquakes and wildfires, you know, you name it. Every category is basically covered by these plans. And of course, as a national program, some of these kinds of hazards are much more important in some regions of the country than others. So we do have, for instance, earthquakes is one of the categories we cover, but I think they cover it in a lot more detail in California, just for example. So it's in there. Actually, our risk of earthquakes is not zero, all right? It's infinitesimally small, but it's not zero. So if it's any chance that you could have a threat, we at least assess it. But then how much of a threat it really is sort of determines how much attention and focus and detail is put on that particular threat in any one state or region. So, but they're all in here. So we cover all of these different topics. So what do we mean by mitigation when we talk about mitigating natural hazards? That box until the upper left in the green says, "Actions to reduce the impacts of natural hazards with strategies including policy, projects, and programs." So starting off, mitigation is not just one thing. It's a potential series of different approaches, some of which might be physical projects on the ground to actually improve your infrastructure, some of which might be changes in policies, land use and development policies and other things in the sort, some of which might even be public education and that sort of thing. So we'll see a little bit more about that. The left lower part of this slide gives sort of the basic framework that we use to do these kind of plans. We start by asking, what preventative actions are being taken now that you already have in place to reduce the risk? Because these towns, all of them in New England, have been dealing with floods and hurricanes and nor'easters for years and decades. It's not as if you have nothing in place. So we want to know what the starting point is. From that, we can see where are the gaps? Where could something be improved? Where could something be strengthened? And that's what leads us to the second part, what additional actions can take to increase the town's resilience. So that's the underlying philosophy for doing this. And what FEMA is really trying to do nationwide with this program is break what they call the cycle of disaster rebuild, disaster again, rebuild again, and, you know, rinse and repeat. So now, it's not that severe in Milis, fortunately, but some of our coastal communities do experience this where they have more frequent, more severe storms. And so the idea is, what can we do to... Maybe you can't completely break this cycle, but to interrupt it and slow it down. So hazard mitigation, like I said a little minute ago, is not really any one thing. It's kind of like, I think of it as a suite of different tools and different techniques. And one way to break the main categories of those suites, of that suite down is this list here of six different measures. And I'll just very briefly go through what they think, what they're thinking about. Prevention is what you can do to stay out of harm's way to begin with. So by planning and zoning, if you know, let's look, for instance, your zoning overlay, which we're working on right now, right? Your zoning overlay district helps you direct development away from known hazard areas and other kinds of measures like that, that sort of, let's stay out of harm's way to begin with as well as we can. Property protection recognizes that, you know, development has gone on for decades, if not centuries, in New England towns that went on in times before we knew where all the hazard areas were, before we had today's mapping. People are now have a lot of developed property in places we now know to be hazardous. They do experience those hazards in many communities. And so what can we do to sort of coexist and make those existing development more resilient? So that could be things like building elevation in the floodplain, even just elevating the utilities up in the basement. If you have a basement flooding, some of the most expensive equipment might be the first thing to get flooded, things of that sort that you can do, hurricane-proofing buildings and that sort of thing. The third one is public education, and I don't want to underplay that. There's a lot, you know, that all the infrastructure and physical changes are important, and they sort of get a lot of the headlines. But public education is very important because it's not only what you, as a town, can do in your policies and your programs, but it's what each individual property owner could be aware of what their risks are and the things they can be doing on their own property. That would include not only residential, but small businesses, right? So that's why in doing this plan, we want to be able to reach out and get the broader community aware of these issues. The fourth category here is protecting natural resources and, you know, protecting the floodplains and the wetlands. And there's where some of your local bylaws come in to help do that and property and open space acquisition of key areas. I call this letting Mother Nature do some of the work for us to, you know, let's let the floodplains, in fact, in this part of the world, Charles River watershed, you probably know, one of the most innovative programs that's ever put forward by the federal government was the Army Corps of Engineers some 50 years ago or more, the Natural Valley Sewage, which was a project whereby they came out to the lower and upper, rather, the middle and upper Charles River based on they purchased a lot of the floodplain in wetland areas, set it aside so it could do its job of absorbing floodwater. And you probably know where these, where these sites are in your community and your neighboring towns all around here. And many of us wish that that kind of program had been followed, you know, by other agencies and in other watersheds. It's kind of turned out to be a one-off, unique program in the Charles River from all the way back to, I guess, the 1960s, 70s. But this idea of protecting the resources to let them be a buffer, to let them help protect you. Then you have structural projects, and there's where you may need to say, okay, we already know that our infrastructure, it may be old, it's out of date, or our development has outpaced it. The storm water was sized for a certain amount of development. Now we have two or three times that much some decades later, and it's generating more runoff, and the system's back up, and they overflow, and that causes flooding. So it's those kinds, culverts, pumps, drainage facilities. And it's those kind of projects that potentially could be funded by FEMA grants when you have an approved plan. And some of them could be big-ticket items. I mean, the FEMA grants are easily six-figure grants in most cases. So that's something to keep an eye on. And then finally, emergency services protection. So this is not an emergency response plan. You already have a plan to do that. It's called your comprehensive emergency management plan. The Chief actually manages that, and in fact, is in the process of updating that plan right now because that also needs to be updated. But this part of the hazard mitigation plan thinks about your facilities and your equipment that you call on in an emergency. You want to make sure that they actually are not vulnerable. The last thing you want is for your services to go out, to be flooded or somehow go out, and then not be able to help everyone else in the town. And that has happened in a few cases. A town of, I think it was North Reading, had a police station near a stream that flooded the basement, which had all the communications equipment. Last thing you wanted to happen, then they were like somewhat, you know, isolated from being able to be functional when they were needed to be called for the rest of the community at, you know, the greatest need. So they later came in and built a flood retention project around that to protect that facility. And then the next time a community thinks about, are we building a newer, more modern public safety building? Let's think hard about where we put that and is, don't, let's not put that in a floodplain next time. I think part of it is that some of these decisions were made decades ago, and people just weren't as aware of some of these. And the other thing, as more development happens, areas that didn't used to be subject to flooding, some that we're finding now are subject to flooding because there's bigger storms. So lots of reasons why these kind of facilities, you want to make sure that they're like the first thing that you keep protected so they can in turn help the rest of the community. So those, those are a few of the major outlines of what we mean by hazard mitigation. And the other thing I'll mention is we look today at the trends that we're seeing in climate change, really a lot of the same topics, increased intensity storms, you know, for the coastal communities, the sea level rise, et cetera, and higher temperatures, obviously, dealing with extreme heat. And so there's really a lot of parallels or overlap. A lot of the climate adaptation plans that some communities have been doing through the, say, the MVP program, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, is very similar, and we're thinking that there's a lot of ways that these can sort of, and should sort of feed on each other and be part of a bigger whole, and that there's a lot of overlap or potential overlap for thinking about these, even though traditionally they came out of different... I mean, when the FEMA program was set up in the year 2000, 24 years ago, people weren't talking about climate change the way they are today. There wasn't as much knowledge. We didn't have the protection. So now we see these things that are coming in. So your plan actually has some pieces in it that actually try to reflect those trends as well. I'll stop for this section for a second and see if anyone has any questions sort of about the broad overview.
I'm good.
Yeah, good. Okay. So let's talk about the planning process right here in, in the town of Milis to develop your newest plan, your 20, what will be your 2024 plan. And this is a little bit of a diagram that shows the steps in the process and from left to right. And we're basically right in the middle of the process here. The big takeaway is that there will be a series of four meetings of the local team, which, as the Chief mentioned, is the Local Emergency Planning Committee, LEPC. That's a great team to use for this purpose just because it has all the right members on it from different committees and different boards and commissions in the town, which is what you want for this plan, a very multidisciplinary plan. Two of the meetings have occurred already. There'll be two more to happen as we finish up in this winter and this spring. We also have, are doing right now this first public meeting. When we have the draft plan put together, before it's finalized and submitted to FEMA, we'll come back with a second public meeting, and we'll actually make that draft plan available, post it on the website. So people will be able to see the actual plan and comment on it if they wish, or ask questions about it. So right now, this is a work in progress. We don't have the plan done yet, but we're in the middle of the process. We want to give people a heads up. This is what we're working on. Expect to see this plan in a few months, and there'll be a chance for communities, for members of the community to look it over, comment, question it. So the process is being overseen by the LEPC. You can see on the right side the kinds of boards, commissions, and departments that are participating in that, and they all have a certain aspect of this kind of a hazard plan to contribute into or a certain amount of knowledge about certain things that we need to do. So that's why it's very important that we have them. And they've been very active in these two meetings. They're very, very helpful. Like I said, four meetings. At the end, the team will look over the recommendations that we come up with and make sure that they think, hey, this is the right mix for the town. It's feasible. It would be, you know, something that the town wants to move ahead with. So that's what you'll see coming, coming forward in a few months for the final plan. So the, so the work we've done so far of gathering information, having two of the team meetings and doing some research and gathering as we're gathering information for this plan, a few of the things we've pulled together so far. We've done an updated inventory of what we call the critical facilities and infrastructure in the town. These are all mapped. I know you can't see it at this scale, but they're all mapped on this map. And this is only a representative sample of the kinds of things that are on the list because it, there's dozens of sites in this overall inventory. But it has things like municipal facilities. It has infrastructure that you see here, like water, sewer, communications, and it has community facilities. One way to think about it is we have facility, we have sites that provide utility to the town, like Public Works and Emergency Management and Communications. And we have sites that may require assistance, totally to the other side of the coin. So there's where your public housing, assisted living, you know, health centers, et cetera, are on the list. So they're on there for different reasons. But we think they're all equally important reasons to be on a list of critical facilities. Yeah?
Sorry. Are these actual things, this community facilities? Are these actual?
Yes.
What's the Family Health Center?
I will leave, sorry, I got ahead of my slides here.
Doctors' offices.
Oh, Milis Family Health?
Yeah.
Got it. I thought we had another one. Okay.
And, okay, now.
That was just, that's just one of the few. We tried to list the areas, you know, your building with the doctor's offices, stuff like that.
Okay. And why is Sparhawk Academy on here?
It's a school.
Oh, it's a school.
Yeah, we put schools on it. Yeah, and sorry.
Couple hundred students.
I don't see my house on here.
Your house, if you looked at that map in enough detail, you might actually see it.
Sorry.
I'm sure we should. That's an oversight. I'm sure we can deal with that.
Okay, good.
And the stables.
And in case you were wondering, I am the representative from the Select Board on the LEPC.
Oh, look at you.
Figured you must be because Ellen hasn't bragged about attending, and I don't recall it indeed.
I forget how many sites are on the full list, but it might be 60 or 70 different sites on this full list. These are like representative. I didn't want to throw a list of 60. Yeah, it's, these are samples of the kind of thing. Then the other thing we've gathered that's very site-specific, and again, with the knowledge of this team, like, I wouldn't know a third of these, a tenth of these things on my own. They're not the kind of things you can look up on the Internet and Google. Knowledge of the local folks in this town is just, you know, there's no substitute for that, and that's why this team has been so wonderful. We also put together an assessment of where are local hazard areas within the town, and they tend to fall into flooding, areas that have local drainage flooding problems, areas that might be brush fire hazard areas where there's, because of the vegetation, et cetera, at least the potential for that kind of brush fire, fire, fire. And then, and one thing that's been unique about Milis, you've had actually an extraordinary number of microbursts and tornadoes in this little town, more than any other towns. We've done this work in a lot of towns, so we actually put those on there as well. I don't know what it is about attracting these microbursts. I hope you, whatever it is, you can get rid of it, but, yeah.
You're just lucky.
I mean, it's totally, this is a kind of a totally random thing. If, because it happened in one place, it's not like flooding. If it happened in one place, that's no indication that it would happen again in that place the way flooding.
No, just right next door.
Yeah, right. See, you don't want your house on this plan because you'll just be attracted. So these are some of the things. And then all the other hazards we look at in the plan, extreme heat, earthquakes. That earthquake map in the middle shows you the range of earthquake potential from low to high. But even in Massachusetts, the highest high is low on a national scale, say, compared to California, right? But you're even in the lower end there, you're probably somewhere between the green, you're probably in the green or maybe the yellow, right? Yeah, so you're, it's not, it's a very low probability event. But again, not a zero probability, so it's in the plan. We look at drought. The map on the upper right is the droughts that were declared back in 2016 when we had really widespread statewide drought that lasted almost a year, extreme precipitation. Lower left side is wildfire potential on a statewide scale. So basically, all of these hazards are addressed, and there's information about them. If any of them have occurred here, there's a history of like when and where they've occurred, that sort of thing. All right. And then our, one of our favorite hazards in New England, this is New England, so we have nor'easters, right? This is like not, you're not gonna get this in California. You may get, you may have earthquakes, but you're not gonna get nor'easters. And we've really been pummeled by quite a few of them, including two of them in 2018, two months apart. January and, doesn't say here, but January and March of 2018 both had pretty nasty ones. And I think we had another one after this in 2020, if I'm not mistaken. So these are fairly frequent, not every single year, but every few years we get pretty significant ones. And then finally, what are the, we talked about, we asked that question, what do you have in mitigation that's in place already? This is a first cut to say what that is. It's an inventory that's in the plan that goes into, and again, this is just kind of a high-level summary of it. There's a multi-page table and all the details of these kinds of things. But you have in place already measures that deal with multiple hazards, not just any one category, like your, your LEPC. You have a number of specific flood-related mitigation places in place already, like your zoning overlay, your stormwater utility and bylaw, your flood resilience plan that was just recently done. It's actually a very forward-looking piece and that sort of thing. And then several culvert and drainage individual projects that are spelled out in the plan, site-specific. And then other hazards, fire prevention and fire mitigation, public permitting and reviewing local divisions, subdivisions, and things like how you deal with winter, winter events and high wind events. High wind events are something that we're seeing, and just like extreme rain, more of. You know, they lead to the biggest, the biggest take home usually is more tree down, tree fall and more power outages. And I just think that we're seeing all around the region, more of that more frequently. So something to take more into account, and we'll talk about that in the plan. So next steps to completing the plan. This just lays out the subs ahead of us. There'll be a third team meeting and followed by a fourth team meeting, probably around February and March, next month, the month after. Then I think by April, we'll have the second, we'll have the draft plan put together, and we'll come back for a second public meeting, if you'll have us. And we'll, then, once that's gone through review, and we'll write any comments we receive and respond to those, we'll have a draft plan that's ready to go to official review. And it goes to MIMA and to FEMA, MIMA, the Mass. Emergency Management Agency, and then to FEMA. And it goes sequentially. We don't get to do them parallel. So we have to do one, wait for them to respond, then do the other. Each of those reviews could result in them coming back and asking us to make revisions or additions or edits, which we'll do. That's the usual part of the process, if that, if that's needed. Once they have both MIMA and FEMA agreed that the plan content meets all their standards, then it would, they would issue what's called approvable pending adoption. Everything in the plan is approvable. Now it just needs to be adopted. Everything in the plan is approvable, now it just needs to be adopted, and this is the body that has the power to adopt the plan. A simple resolution that says, you know, here, we hereby adopt the plan is really what it comes down to, but that's the very last sort of administrative piece. Once that's in, you'll have a five-year letter of approval, you'll be grant-eligible for all those grants for the next five years, and we'll be back five years later, right, Bob? So that's, that's pretty much the process. Now, I just want to leave you though with, we have a way that we're trying to reach out, because I know that a lot of people can't come to meetings like this, and I don't know how many people are online, but probably, there's more people we'd like to be able to reach. So we have a survey that we're up, it's an online survey, it's actually a pretty simple, just has four or five questions. It probably takes less than 10 minutes to take. And this, a version of this is actually going up on the town's website to announce the survey, so people can click on that link, or they can even, we're very modern here, we have a QR link, somebody had to explain to me what that was recently. But that takes you right to the survey, it's all online, you answer mostly multiple choice questions, but there's a couple of comment boxes that if you wish to say more or give a little more detail, we welcome that. And so we'll see what we can do to garner more interest in more, and for people to maybe to express their concerns. I'm concerned, I live on Exnum Avenue, and I'm concerned about the flooding that happens here. Once in a while, we actually, usually the Public Works and everyone in town knows where everything's going on, but sometimes we hear about something localized through these surveys that folks go, we better look more into that. So it's the kind of thing that we sort of welcome folks to take a look at that. Yeah, and that's, that's the overview, and thank you for the time in front of you, because I know that it's a busy board. Even if you do have hearings that get put on, I know that it's a busy board.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Sure.
And we'll have you back in April, and if there's a well-written motion, Ellen will make it, we'll probably...
Not tonight.
Not, no, not for tonight, for when you come back, we're done with everything. Nothing tonight.
Right.
Good question. The review by MEMA and FEMA, how long does that usually take? Are we looking at the fall, are we looking at a month?
No, you're looking at well more than a month. You know, here's the question, that time of review has varied a lot over the last few years, and it partly depends on their staff capacity and how many other plans they're looking at in any one time, and whether there's been a hazard that they have to do real-time response to, because they take staff off of these administrative things, and they detail them to actually going to Vermont or, you know, because FEMA covers all six New England states, so when Hurricane Irene came through here, everyone scattered out of the offices, and like all the plans got put on the inboxes for a few months. If that doesn't happen, if it's a normal review period, I would estimate the state review will take four to six weeks, it'll go to FEMA, that will take two to three months. But that's an average over time, yeah. So, yeah, you're talking about four to six months overall.
Aaron will have a motion.
About this time next year.
Right. Well, actually, if we put this in in April, you should have it by the fall, you know, unless unforeseen, something really slows things down. And actually, that's good to keep in mind because if you were interested in queuing up an actual project grant, there, those usually come out in the fall. And so you probably would, if everything goes right here, and their timing doesn't take a lot longer than normal, you might be in a position to then think about applying for that next round of grants. And the grant program that FEMA offers for projects is called the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities, BRIC or BRIC grant, that's the name of their grant. And I'll add that, you know, the kinds of project ideas that might come out of this plan might also be something you could apply to an MVP action grant through the state program as well, because they fund some of the same kind of projects.
So aren't we covered, so are we, are we in limbo right now? We're not covered under the last five-year one?
That's right, because that lapsed.
Because Bob, what, he let it slip, so now we're not covered?
No.
I just want to drill down here.
It takes, Bob applied for a grant, you know how long it takes to get the grant in hand from the time you apply for it? This one took a year and a half.
Okay.
Just to get the grant to start working on the plan.
Okay, all right, all right, all right.
He's protecting our resources.
And, I mean, I don't think you had, I don't think you have a grant that you're ready to put in right now, anyway.
No.
So I'll give you, you know, it's a great program, you can find some great projects, but it's a heavy lift. The grant application is a big federal grant application, so you need, if you're going to do that, you want to start preparing for that in advance. You might even need some consultant engineering help, even to help you put a good, because you have to, for a particular project that you might want to apply for, you have to run through FEMA's benefit cost analysis, you have to use their program to do that. They offer a training on how to do that down in their headquarters in Gaithersburg, Maryland. The training is three full days.
Oh, my God.
Just to give you an idea, okay? So it's a heavy lift, I don't want to discourage you, but, because you can get some really good projects funded through this, and many towns around the region have gotten some projects, so keep it on your radar is what I would suggest.
Hokey-dokey.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
That was good.
All right. All right, our next topic up is the review and approve the energy cost-saving proposal, lighting efficiency upgrade at the library.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the proposed agreement with Prism Energy Services for the installation of a new lighting system at the library, which will improve the efficiency and effectiveness of that system. The funds for this were recently approved at the fall annual town meeting. We have done a great deal of work with Prism in the past, and we're quite confident that they will successfully complete this project within budget and in a timely manner. Both our energy manager, Mr. Weiss, as well as our library director, Ms. Tolson, are both here this evening, certainly to answer any questions about the project. This has been several years in the making. Not long after the library project was completed, issues did start to arise with the lighting system, and they've been continuing ever since. Unfortunately, the lighting control system that was put in was, was near the end of its technology cycle, and therefore, they were outdated very quickly after they were put in. I believe they're also fluorescent lighting, Bob, if I'm correct. The new lighting will be LED, will be much more efficient, much easier to use, and better on the eyes of everyone in the building, I believe. So I don't know if Bob, if you or Kim have any comments in regard to it, or if I missed anything, please feel free to fill in any gaps, but I am recommending that the board vote to approve the agreement this evening and authorize, I believe are authorizing me to sign on the town's behalf.
Yes.
Yes.
I just wanted to add, this is part two of a project that was started last year, so this is a phase two that'll kind of complete the lighting replacement project that was already put in, that's already been partially completed.
We've already committed to phase one.
Right. And we've discussed this at town meeting and other places, so we're quite familiar with it, so. Anybody have any questions specifically?
Oh, the only question I had is, this is not just strictly bulbs and switches, isn't this a lot to do with building management, or no?
So, yes, this will, so in the first phase of the lighting project that was already completed, a new lighting management system was put in that's much simpler to use, it's basically just occupancy sensors, switches, and so this will put the rest of the lighting on that system.
Yeah.
And it's not a whole building management system, it's a lighting.
Right, I get it.
Yeah. All right.
Yep. Ready?
You supposed to do something?
I think so.
All right.
I moved that the board approved the agreement with Prism Energy Services for installation of a new lighting system at the library, front of mountain, not to exceed $95,059, and authorized the town administrator to sign on the town's behalf.
Second.
Okay, so we moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, congratulations. Took a couple of phases, but we get it all done.
We get there.
All right. Okay, next we have liaison updates.
Woo-hoo.
Aaron, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Ellen, do you have something?
Time to shine. It's a good thing that I come to these meetings, because otherwise, the two of you, I don't know what we'd be talking about.
Yeah.
I had two. I had, did you have any, by the way?
I have two also.
Oh.
Unless you take FinCom, which I saw you on the TV, but you didn't.
I did, no, I didn't.
I will take that one.
Okay. Charles River Pollution Control.
Oh.
I know, you know, that's my, my favorite, it's my favorite. It was the shortest Charles River Pollution Control meeting I've ever been to, 15 minutes. And they just went over all the new add-ons, Milis didn't have any, Medway did. And the energy meeting that I went to, which was, was, was good, I thought Bob would be here, it was good. They're working on their plan that they need to put together a 50-year plan on being completely self-sufficient in 50 years. And it was just a great conversation, and they're, they're really doing a lot of work toward this, looking at other towns' plans and trying to get all the stats of Milis, and I think it's going to be great.
Good. Well, I also had, I had two, at the finance committee meeting where they elected a new chair, John Lor will be the new chair, starting at their next meeting. Tricky motion to make it effective at the end of the meeting, we had a lot of word-smiffing on that, but, and I also invited them to our February 5th meeting where the town's going to present their, it is the 5th, right?
Yep.
Where the budgets will be presented. We will not be taking audience questions during that, in an effort to streamline, it's going to be the board talking to the department heads. There'll be plenty of other opportunities for people to ask questions, but this will be our first pass on the budget. And I invited them, because I'm a generous person.
You're that guy.
Yeah, I am. And then I attended the Economic Development Committee, where we discussed the Business Improvement District, where we have a $170,000 grant looking for a purpose of some type. So we're looking at various ways to use that money, or if it should be used, or how we're going to do something with it. As they formulate a final plan, there will be a presentation to us, and we will then